Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our 24th September 2024 meeting. Before I officially call this meeting to order, I would like to take a moment of silence. We lost one of our dear, dear directors yesterday. And if you could just do whatever you need to do, just to honor him. Thank you very much. So I officially call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Director Phipps, could you do the roll call?
Mayor James.
Here.
Councilman Winkler.
Here.
Councilman Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. If I could ask you all to stand and please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And if you all have had a moment to look at the agenda, I will accept a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt the agenda for September 24th, 2024, as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And if you have had a moment to look at the September 10th minutes, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the September 10th, 2024 meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. And any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have public comment. If there is anyone who would like to speak this evening, we ask that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits. And if you could limit your speech to three minutes, that would be appreciated. Y'all are here just to get money, aren't you? I see that. That's all right. We'll move on to the next. So we have a proclamation. In October is National Disability Employment Awareness Month. So I'm going to read a quick proclamation here. Whereas October 2024 marks the 79th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of Americans, workers with disabilities. And whereas the history of NDEAM traces back to 1945, when it started as a week and focused only on people with physical disabilities. And whereas NDEAM was later expanded to a full month and its name and scope evolved to acknowledge the importance of increasing the workforce inclusion of people with all nature of disabilities. And whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. Now, therefore, we, the council of the town of La Plata, do hereby commemorate the 79th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month, proclaim October 2024 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and call upon all employers, schools, and other community organizations to continue to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, and advance individuals with disabilities and work to pursue the goals of opportunity, full participation, economic self-sufficiency, and independent living for people with disabilities. And it is signed by the entire council. Mayor Janine James, Councilman Winkler, Councilman Trolinger, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, and Councilman Jenkins. So that is next month coming up. So that was our proclamation. Next, we will go with what you've been waiting for, our grants. I'm going to start first with Councilman Winkler down there.
So this is a mini grant recipient from the town of La Plata presented to Washington Square in the amount of $500 on the 24th of September in appreciation and recognition of your participation in the Town of La Plata's Neighborhood Event Mini Grant Program. The community spirit is appreciated. And just to add on my own comments, yeah, I think I mentioned in the newsletter, the connection between the community that you see it like something like Washington Square is kind of what makes it very unique. It's not unique to Washington Square. It's, I mean, all of La Plata has it. But it's something that's very unique to the town of La Plata, and we are very appreciative of that.
Is there a recipient here today? Come on down. It's a photo walk. Never pass up a photo walk.
Next, we have a mini grant recipient for Hawthorne Green. Is there anyone here from Hawthorne Green this evening? Yes. Okay. So congratulations. You're receiving the amount of $500 for the holiday gathering in Hawthorne Green this 24th day of September in appreciation and recognition of your participation in the Town of La Plata's Neighborhood Event Mini Grant Program. Your community spirit appreciated by all. Why don't you come on up and we'll give you your certificate. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Fill this memory again. Mini grant recipient of Town of La Plata presented to Faith Temple Baptist Church in the amount of $500 for fall harvest and trunk or treat this 24th day of September 2024 in appreciation and recognition of your participation in the Town of La Plata's Neighborhood Event Mini Grant Program. Your community spirit is appreciated. Signed by Mayor James.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
But she still just.
Neighborhood Event Mini Grant Recipient presented to the Clark's Run Citizens Association, $500 for their holiday hop. And again, this 24th day of September 2024, appreciation and recognition of your participation in the Town of La Plata's Neighborhood Event Mini Grant Program. Your community spirit is appreciated from the council and signed by Mayor James. So why don't we take a picture of that? And I would just underscore with a couple of things. Thank you of all of us because you guys, you ladies are doing a great job. And I like the Clark's Run program. It's appreciated. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Oh, good. She said she's bringing back luminaries this year. So that's, you've got to go down to Clark's Run and see that. And that is, I grew up with luminaries and it's just such a neat holiday feeling. So thank you very much for all that you do to keep the community alive and that spirit alive. It's much appreciated. All right, we will start off with our monthly reports. And we've got Captain Payne first, please. Does anybody have any questions? Good evening.
I have a question, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Payne, for being here. Just a couple of quick questions. I noticed on the bar chart, the chart about the big box store hotel, is it true that, does it seem like the box store is trending downward, which is a good thing?
So I did notice that Target had been significantly less due to asset protection. Getting filled, deposition being filled.
So it does make a difference then?
It doesn't make a difference.
Then I noticed on the traffic stop data that on the top of the tree, you say citations, 36% warnings or 64%. What do those percent numbers mean? Yeah. Okay. All right. And then on the impaired driving active countermeasures, what are the countermeasures?
My visibility enforcement, other than Facebook posts, bed officers actively going on the evenings, trying to stop impaired drivers because we know the deadly part of the year is coming up, especially Halloween.
And then finally, on the Traffic Safety Program Speed Photo Enforcement, it said in August, 464 violations. Does that mean they were exceeding the speed limit over 12 mile an hour?
Yes, sir. And since the practice knew, it's likely.
That was my next question. Okay. So, and I guess I didn't understand. Those move around at different locations, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then I just wanted to congratulate all the awards that your officers are getting. It's again, credit to the training program and the professional development and leadership. So thank you very much for that. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Captain Payne, on the monthly council report, Part One Crimes and Case Closure Rate, juvenile criminal arrests, it says 20, and then there's 11 in parentheses. And I think 11, what's in parentheses is supposed to be year-to-date. So are those numbers backwards or wrong?
I would have to take a look at that. I know I'm looking at lots of data. I did take a look at the spreadsheet that the chief sent, but.
So you have 20, which is supposed to represent the month, I believe, and 11 in the parentheses, which is supposed to represent year-to-date. Were there 11?
Maybe two and 11.
Okay.
I'll take a look at the chart and get back with you.
Okay.
I'm looking at that piece of data. I can show you that there's definitely juvenile arrests.
And of course, you know, that's really important to me because the number of juvenile crimes that we see on social media in Waldorf. And it is really important to me that we notice if it's moving in our, you know, community and what we can do about it.
Absolutely. Yes, I mean, providing monthly juvenile interaction, that's what the chief provides.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question following back up on Councilman Jenkins' question about the 464 violations through the Traffic Safety Program. Is there a period of time, I think I remember there's a period of time in which that it's almost exclusively warnings for a new device, and then it kind of carries over. It's not like, for example, oh, my first violation is a warning versus a citation versus a ticket.
30 days.
Okay.
It runs the trial 30 days. We should have warnings and then once we're done the 30-day with that area, because it deals with the notification of the public and notifications out, people familiar with the location and equipment out there. Then after the 30 days, the warnings, then stop and then start giving citations.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything?
Answered by.
And I would just like to say that they are warnings because I let a family member of mine try it out and they did get a ticket that came out. So I thought that was really nice. So luckily, it was just a warning. That won't happen again. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Next up, Danny. Republic Works. Any questions? Any questions? You?
Question, I guess, again, I offer our condolences and I hope you guys are doing all right. Because I saw them out there today paving in Clark's Run. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Larson. Any questions for our treasurer? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for being here again. Thanks for the report. I noticed that you talked about the new SOP and then I see one of the items that's actually, is a form. So that's in place now, the SOP for procurement?
Yes, it is. It's a process. We currently have paper applications and we are looking at making those automatic or electronic through our accounting system where our acquisition will be submitted. The purchase request will be attached. It will go through the review process. The procurement review will be done by answering questions that will be attached. And then it will come to me and then it will go to the town manager for review.
And there's two more quick, thank you, two more. So I noticed on one of the slides, I don't remember what page it was, but there's a reference to CDs and investments. So does the town have an investor consultant available? Because what I understand, and tell me if I'm wrong, CDs don't get a whole lot of interest anymore.
No, but we are bound by the requirements within the code. We can only invest in certain investments. CDs, one of the better ones that we can invest in. So it's really tailored to protection of the funds. So protecting the funds is more important than trying to get a better rate.
And then finally, there was a reference to grants being awarded. And so had the police station and the Dorchester documentation been submitted or what's?
That's what it is. So the grants that we, Cornerstone had, I guess, lobbied on our behalf, needed an application. Those applications have been submitted. I've talked with the state. It's gone through the review process and it has to go through another process. So those have been submitted.
And it was submitted to the Department of General Services because I understand they told us, the Cornerstone tells us that they administer those actual grants.
Yes. So it's been for the, two for the Dorchester Community Center and one for the police because the other grants that are for FY '24, '25, they haven't been assigned a number. So once they get assigned a grant number, I can then submit that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Larson, when we did the budget, the contracted services were around 47%. And I'm looking at it now and it's at 38.75. What changed?
I'm not sure. I mean, the, which page are you looking at?
I'm looking at general funds and I would hate to tell you your page because I'm looking at the total.
That's all right. I write the pages down.
I think it's five of 21.
Well, actually, I wrote down the pages.
Yeah, so it's on general fund.
Yes. So this is actually the month of July, year-to-date. So that's how much, it's not the total budget, but the year-to-date amount, percentage based on the categories.
Okay. So we don't, is there a slide that's going to show me actual year-to-date to budget?
Yeah, they should be in there.
Okay. And then one of the things that you and I discussed was seeing what the contracted services were because that's a high-dollar percentage for contracted services.
So I thought I had sent you the list, but to go, part of it is insurance. And sometimes you'll see it's higher percentage-wise for the budget because we pay our general liability insurance upfront.
So insurance is considered a contracted service?
Yes. It's coded under contracted services. There's the inspection services through planning and zoning. There's licenses such as the IT 365 licenses for everybody to use their office applications. And again, that's another one that's paid upfront. So that whole cost for the whole year is in July. Electricity, that's another one that goes into contracted services.
Contracted services, not utilities?
We don't have a section for just utilities. These are our, so our different categories, the way we have it set up. We have salaries. We have fringe benefits. We have contracted services, supplies and materials, other expenditures, which is really training, that type of cost, and then capital outlay. Those are the categories we have.
So then contracted services is actually distorted because it's not truly, they're not truly contracts because a utility is not a contract.
True. But it fits in that category when you look at all the categories. We are purchasing a service from Smako for the electricity. So think of it more of on a service side.
Okay. So what else would not truly be a contract that would be?
Well, insurance, again, we're purchasing a service. So think of it more on the service because there's just so many categories we want. This is how we've had it set up.
And that's fine. I'm just trying to figure out what's not.
Think of services. Think of that line as services.
Okay.
Yes.
Instead of contract.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
But thank you, Madam Mayor. Just as a follow-up to Councilwoman Jenkins' inquiry, I think, you know, knowing that we have a lot of contracted services, actually, I mean, can you provide us the actual, I don't want to say actually, but maybe the layperson's definition of a contracted service definition? So for example, can we get a further split up of this?
I can send you a report that will kind of show you professional contracted services, insurance. I can send you that because even though that's our category, we have other subcategories within there and then other line items for more specific. So yes, I can provide that to you.
I, you know, I think that would be great. Because then we can dive into the numbers a little bit more and see where we can maybe supply in-house where we can or whatever. So thanks.
Anything? Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Director Phipps. Any questions for Director Phipps and Legislative Services? Go ahead.
Thank you, Director Phipps, for the, again, the comprehensive presentation. There's a reference to going to this new, I guess, module or software, Meeting Management Civic Clerk?
Yes.
Could you briefly explain what that is again and when do you think it'll be implemented?
It's a meeting management. That's the MM part, is the advanced meeting management.
Okay.
And what we're on right now is Civic Web. So that's the iCompass platform. It's provided by Diligent. We are transitioning from that to AMM, which is part of the Civic Plus umbrella, which I know they're all called Civic everything. But so Civic Plus is where we have our website and also where we have our town code housed. And so now we'll be moving into a third module to kind of streamline that experience so it's all in one place instead of having to look in three different locations to find the information.
So this will mean that you don't have to hit another link, you know, go outside the town website to get the stuff?
That's the dream, sir.
Thank you. And then so what are your expectations of when it'll be in play or in use?
We anticipate it for your first meeting in October. I know that's very fast and I'm not sure I'll be ready to transition that.
That's a much better, I mean, I understand there'll be glitches and stuff, but I applaud that effort because it will make it easier for everybody to access the meeting information, not only us, but the citizens.
Yes, sir. That's our hope.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. And Director Kennedy. Thank you very much for your report. Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Kennedy, so I had a couple of conversations over the weekend with regards to the palacity and individuals having to clock in on their phones. And the cell service down at the Public Works Department is not that great. So sometimes they can't clock in and they're required to have someone else clock them in. Do we have a plan to remedy that? Because I think that puts folk at jeopardy for not having their times documented adequately. If I've got to wait for someone else to be able to clock me in because I can't get the service on my phone to clock in, do we have another?
So the function should be turned on, that it still registers you as an offline clock-in. And then the next time that you connect, it should upload that information. So they shouldn't be able to not clock in at all. It just won't send a notice that it's happened until later, but I can double-check those features.
If we can do that, I think that, because I think that causes some angst.
Yeah. And even if the app isn't working, they can use their phone to log into a browser and login from the browser.
So it's not the app, it's the service. So if you can't get cell service, you're not going to be able to load any apps or online or anything.
So you're saying there's no option for, there's no data service and no Wi-Fi service?
It's pretty sketchy from what I heard from several people that it's sketchy down there. And sometimes they can't get it to pull up because of the cell service.
Right. But either way, it should still record that offline connection, but I can double-check.
Okay. Okay. Because I don't think that I should have to depend on someone else to clock me in.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I had a question about the webinars. I know there's, it seems like we've had a lot of great opportunities for continuing education. What's the attendance like with these continuing education programs? Is it just a few people that are doing them or are we getting some broad?
No. So these webinars are the ones that I'm taking for my own education to run HR better.
Okay.
Right. So these aren't necessarily ones that anybody, for the most part, they're not any that are offered to employees unless there's something like, if Charles County offers the one about retirement, they usually have somebody that comes in like once or twice a year. We'll post those to all the employees to attend if they want to. But for the most part, the ones that are listed on there are the ones that I'm doing to benefit the town.
Okay. Is that all, like, what's the timeframe for all these? Just the past month or?
Yeah, usually I'm posting them on a monthly basis.
Okay. Do we have, I would assume we've got like an education budget for, I guess, each department? Or do we not, is this just kind of as needed?
So these webinars that I take are almost always free.
That's awesome.
Or they're included in my memberships with other organizations that the town does pay for. So like I'm a member of SHRM, which is the big HR organization. And any presentation that's put on by them, I'm already covered. So.
And conferences?
Conferences, if I'm speaking at them, they're comped by the conference. So it's no cost to the town either.
Okay.
And then, so there's only two that I put in my budget for the town to pay for that are outside of that. But a lot of times I pay for my own.
Okay. Do we have an education budget for each department?
Each department sets their own, like, continuing education budget. But when it comes to like the tuition assistance, that all falls under HR.
Understood. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One other question. What do you? Do, what do you use to identify best practices for some of the changes that have been implemented since you started?
So a lot of it is, I'll use my resources from SHRM or PASHRA, which is like the government version of SHRM. So I'll look at, a lot of times they have toolkits out there, they've already got pre-made job descriptions, they've got checklists. So I'll use a lot of that. And then I'm also very active in several different HR networking groups locally in both Maryland and Virginia, and I'll reach out to my peers and say, hey, give me a sample of your policy, or what do you guys do in this situation? So I'm always collecting data from, from my network.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, thanks for the report. And I know, I think Councilman Winkler had a bunch of questions and a request, and I would just echo that about, is it possible for us to get a monthly update on the pension plan process?
Sure. Yeah, there's, there's nothing to report now. I've had, you know, as I showed in my email earlier this week, there's the situations that I'm running into with multiple different vendors is, once I've given them those 12 bullet points of that Plan III, and I say, hey, I need to create this, you know, 70-page legal document based on 12 bullet points. Usually they'll look at it and be like, yeah, this is not, they'll, most of the time they just ghost me. It starts with, oh, we can totally do defined benefits, and then I'm like, here's my, here's my outline to start something. And then like, oh, that's, that's interesting, or they have some follow-on questions that I answer, and then I never hear from them again. So right now, I'm actually speaking potentially with two different vendors to try to get their, their view. Hopefully, I can continue those conversations.
And again, pardon my ignorance, but, so the Bolton reports, or the latest one, never gave us kind of a template to do that, or they couldn't do it, or they can't do that?
Well, yeah, they're just an actuarial service, they don't do legal plan documents, right?
That explains it, okay. But again, I just, hopefully we can get a monthly update.
I wish I had more to give.
Well, but, but that's, I, I think it's important that we have something, thank you.
Yeah, sometimes, even if it's not a big update, just let us know progress is being made, or where, if there are things to fine-tune, at least, or modify, just keep us posted.
Anything? And I know this isn't in the report, but really nice job yesterday reaching out to the employees.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next is back with Director Phipps. We had the results of the survey, of the National Community Survey results came in. Oh, yes, please sit. I feel like we would be here all night. And thank you for your summary in, in the form of a memo on that, that was very helpful.
Madam Mayor, Town Council, you have before you the results of the National Community Survey conducted this year, 2024. This is the first time this has been done since 2016. I would like to say out, up in front that I did not intend for these results to be the end of a conversation, but the beginning of a conversation and a tool for future conversations that you'll be having as we start the budget process. My full intent on this is, one, we had not done a community survey in some time, and it seemed like we were due. Another, we have the elections coming up, and knowing this in advance, I felt would be very helpful to an incoming council, any incoming council. But as with our budget coming up, setting our priorities, we don't know what they are. We don't know what the community's priorities are, so I thought it was important to ask. And in the interest of community engagement, this, this tool exists, so. We have worked with ICMA before, they acquired Pollco, and they conducted this survey. So these, the questions that were on it were very similar to the survey that was conducted in 2016. We did add a couple, a few custom ones that differed, but mainly, they were pretty much the same question. So as far as comparing data from 2016 to now, I think you'll be able to do that pretty well with what we have. And attached to the agenda, there was the, the results from the 2016 poll, so you can see how that worked out. I intentionally did not summarize anything or bring any attention to any particular sector on my memo, because I know it would be the things that I felt were important, and not the things that maybe you had a question about. So as I was reviewing these results, I looked at it, I was looking at it through my lens of, what are my goals, and what am I doing right now, and am I on the right track? So I did find support for what I was doing, which, you know, there's that confirmation bias always. But there was high support for, there's the need for more open space, for outdoor recreation and trails, one of my personal interests, the natural environment, so something that Keep La Plata Beautiful has been working on, and we will, based on this survey, keep working on. Sustainability came up very early in the results. I was a little concerned, I mean, it's, it's not something I can fix, obviously, but the, the question on page eight about remaining in La Plata, that to me is the sustainability question. How do we sustain our community? And it sounds like there's a lot of people who don't plan on staying in La Plata, and that's something that needs to be addressed. The governance on page nine was a little concerning, but I mean, in terms of general skepticism towards government in general, I mean, that's not too surprising. I did note that the question at the bottom, overall, how would you rate the quality of services provided by each of the following? The standard question was town of La Plata, and then federal government. I felt like, we felt like, Michelle and I, in looking at the questions, we maybe needed to look a little closer. And as it turned out, that was a question on page 24, that was one of our customized. Charles County's excellent or good rating was 41%, and Maryland State was 45%. So at 61%, we're winning, if that's how that works. Downtown vibrancy on the economy page, page 11, downtown vibrancy and economic development. The council has mentioned many times about an interest in investing in that, and I think these numbers support that. And I'm wondering why I wrote this giant, oh, a giant exclamation point on page 15, because there were a lot of lower sectors. And as disappointing as that is, that's also, you know, a clear direction for us to look at. These are the things that we definitely need to look at. Overall design was in there, well-designed neighborhoods, quality of development, well-planned residential growth. I feel like we can all figure out what that, that was about. But anyway, like I said, that's why I didn't write all that on the memo, because these are the things that interest me and affect my job performance. But I feel like, as, as you go through it, and you're wondering about, am I on the right track on, do we need more of this? 426 people will, will let you know what they think about that. So, anyway, that's, is that a summary, is that enough?
I do. Director Phipps, so looking at that data, do you think that we would benefit from having an economic development team, department, function, role?
I do feel like we need, and that was on page 11 on economy. La Plata as a place to visit appears to be lacking here destinations, and we're looking at, as we're looking at placemaking, this is a way to address that vibrancy of the downtown and commercial area. I mean, this is Main Street, Maryland to a T. Employment opportunities and economic development, these are all things that our citizens, at least, and our, our citizens who are engaged and care about what we're doing, they feel like these are priorities for us. So, yes, ma'am, I do believe that.
Thank you.
I mean, like, similarly, there's sometimes a competing interest between economic development and open space and rec space. I know it's come up in some of our meetings with Keep La Plata Beautiful, is we don't necessarily have anybody at the table whose sole job is to pursue recreational activities that would kind of balance, balance those interests. Is that something that you think, in looking at these results, the town would probably benefit from?
I, I think we could do that easily within a community development department, if that's going to be.
No, that's a little bit tricky, because we have competing interests with the county as well, and opportunities for collaboration. But having a point person may be helpful in that.
Certainly. It has worked out really well between, I, I was on the task force with Councilwoman Jenkins for the Parks Master Plan, for the county Parks Master Plan. And by being on that task force, I got to work with Sam Jury at the county parks. Then we managed to coordinate amongst us and build kind of that relationship, where we're like, could you maybe not do that? Because we're already going to do that, and why would we duplicate efforts? So, so they can better serve the whole county, and we can also serve our, our town.
Right, those direct relationships can go a lot farther than maybe, you know, a lot of the red tape that the politics get involved with. So we appreciate your, you know, leadership in that. And I think just doing this, I mean, eight years is a long time, a lot of changes have happened since 16, so.
Certainly.
I, I really appreciate it. I don't think any of us are going to be surprised by any of these results, but there's a lot to digest. And I know it was suggested earlier, I think by Councilman Winkler, that maybe we have a work group or a session at some point here to just kind of dive in as we look at the budget going forward, might be helpful.
Yeah, I, I would just comment, I, Director Phipps, thank you for the, the kind of putting some context around it, because it is a lot of data to unpack and to try to pull out what exactly, what it means and what, where we can take it and what we can, can do with it. And I think, you know, what I'm hearing is, is the two things that I'm most encouraged about is the idea of some sort of an economic development commission and a community engagement as, as part, because I think that's what's, that's what's kind of the missing and, as Councilman Trelinger alluded to, you have it. None of these, none of these numbers are too surprising, given what's happened in the last eight years since the last survey. And I think that's, that's the connecting piece to it, is, is we know what, where we need to go. We just need to, to have some way or, or some person to push that in the right direction to, to correct some of where we might feel we're lacking. But I would, I would certainly, I, I would like to revisit this, and like, like Councilman Trelinger said, in some sort of work group, or where we sit down and really try to unpack what, you know, it might just be one or two things that we can do very quickly to elicit a, a positive response, or elicit a, a correction. And then that's one less thing we have to worry about, and we can move on to the next, so, thank you.
And do you think that this would be appropriate to do at a budget meeting? Because some of these things that are, have budget impacts.
That was part of the reason for the timing on this, we wanted to get this in before the budget cycle started again.
Fantastic, and that's maybe we can also look at where we go with the community development director on there. And talk about that budgetary, Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you again, Director Phil, thanks for, Phipps for doing this, and I would, I think, I, I can't quote it, but your, your opening statement captured it all, that this is needed, and and I would just, I guess, have a question or just a comment. I know that this compares us to other communities, and either we're higher, or at the same level or lower. And, and I, I guess in one sense, that's a good thing for comparison, but just because we're at the same level or higher doesn't necessarily mean we're really good at it. That would be my, I, I guess that's my only pause. And, and so it, with this, this preliminary information, will it be shared with the community?
Absolutely, I'm, it's attached to the agenda, so it's already out in the world.
Well, I know.
But it'll also be on our webpage.
Because I think this is something to put out there on a, frankly, a horrible program for engagement.
Okay.
Because this clearly says to me, engagement is needed, economic development is needed. That, that's what it says to me, and frankly, that's kind of like my, one of my many angst and passions, to be blunt about it. So, and I do think it, it needs to be talked about sooner than later, as we, as we even approach the October, late October budget CIP process. I mean, I think we need to get started sooner than later on this, so I appreciate that effort. And in fact, I, I will tell you, this gives me a lot of information for my upcoming podcasts.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you, but don't go anywhere.
No.
Because I'm going to have you stay here for the next report. I know that in the Department of Director Harrington, you have been named as the one that's going to answer all the questions on this annual report, right?
I feel as though you have been misinformed, Madam Mayor.
She did, Director Harrington did a very good job explaining the report at the Planning Commission, but it is up, and I will give you an opportunity to say what you need and see if there's any questions.
The, the only thing I was going to say was, I am happy to pass on any questions you might have about the annual report to Director Harrington. We're still in touch and we're coordinating on that, unless Councilwoman Bryant Ward would like to answer the questions.
Any questions? Councilman Jenkins?
Well, thank you, because these are very, I, I know the state requires it, but these are valuable documents that, that we can share with the public, so they really understand what the commission does. And I just have a, I guess, a theoretical or philosophical question, because I, I also watched the Planning Commission last week, and I'm curious, because we, we have on our agenda, we have a public comment as part of it, so why doesn't the Planning Commission have that? And, and let me clarify that when I ask that, not to get up and, and, and ask you about a particular project, but just to have a, like a three-minute session where they can ask questions about the planning or the planning. I, I'm just curious why we don't do that.
That's legislation. What, Director Phipps, why don't they have a public comment section?
To my knowledge, it's not written into the rules or procedure. I think it would be something the Planning Committee, Commission would look at.
So could that be a request?
Director Phipps, Director of Legislative Services, can that be written into the policy procedure?
Believe that would be something for the Planning Commission's next agenda.
And, and of course, I mean, and, and I understand the complications, because I, I used to do that for a living, so I kind of get it. So, so hopefully, there's proper decorum, and there's not going to be a shouting session where somebody gets up and says, well, I don't like this project. It really is like what we do here. We ask the citizens, you know, come, come and give us your three minutes, and ask us, or give us a comment or overview, or issues that you're concerned about. And I just, for me, speaking for me, I think that's something perhaps the Planning Commission could, could consider it. That's all, thank you.
And once I receive the signature from the chair, then I will mail that off to Maryland Planning.
Any other questions for Director Phipps or Councilwoman Bryant Ward? I was really trying to think of a hard question, but I watched it, so I shouldn't have watched it. Thank you very much for answering those questions, you did well passing it along. It was, it was good. Thank you, Director Phipps. Yeah, there you go. All right, next up are matters of council discussion, and we have the dam breach analysis for AgroCopia. And I know that Melinda is online. There was a memo that was attached to that, and hopefully, if you all had any questions, you were able to reach out to her. Do you have any questions on pretty straightforward discussion there, anything? All right, so I'm going to reach, I'm going to see, there's a consensus to move this forward to legislation. Councilman Trelinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Ms. Minor, next is CGA?
September 17th, addressing the issue that you
Sorry. Addressing the issues that you had at the last council meeting. They've provided the previous executed contracts, session reports, summary of deliverables. Do you have any further questions? Need answers to anything?
All right, then I will
I do, I'm wrong, sorry, I do have just one, I guess, question. Thank you for that information, that was helpful. I, I'm reading the prior contracts and then the latest one, I, maybe I missed it, but I just, I'm I don't know how those, those priorities got on the, the contract. I mean, I, I don't know if we ever talked about those priorities. And so if you did, maybe I missed it, but, but I don't understand why there are, and man, frankly, and And man, frankly, in particular is Dorchester again. I mean, why is it there when they haven't used the grant money? And we can't meet with them and we don't have any visibility. It just concerns me. And that raises the issue of again, how are, how are these priorities developed?
I'm going to go off memory, Councilman Jenkins, because I couldn't find the documentation. But I remember when we engaged with CGA at the beginning with, um, uh, Mr. Middleton. A list of priorities was developed and it was presented, the town manager presented it to the council. And they were, a consensus was to move forward with that and have CGA follow through on, I believe there were 10 of them. We, I can't find that document, but I remember seeing it.
My memory's fading too. And so I, I do kind of recall, but, but, so that was done in 21?
Um.
I, I guess what I'm trying to ask, shouldn't we review those every year before we agree to a contract with them about what those priorities are?
That's the will, will of the council, yes.
Yeah, that was discussed the last time.
Was.
Okay. Because we talked about with Mr. Manuel about the timing of the sessions and when would be appropriate to get together with Cornerstone. I don't, I don't know that happened after that. That was kind of after the horse had left the barn, so to speak.
Right.
But Councilman Jenkins said, I think because of some ambiguity about priority wise, what's on the list and what was most important. That was, that was what we had all talked about, but, um, I don't know that there was a plan in place that Mr. Manuel gave us after that.
I don't recall a plan. I just recall a list and nothing, not ranked from one to 10, just draw a list. Yeah.
So I'm looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation. Uh, Councilman Winkler?
So essentially you're asking to engage or sign a contract for, for, for a purpose that we've yet to decide or yet to determine or because we don't have this list, this, this, and I'm, I'm fine about, you know, because I'm, I, you know, I don't have the, the, the beauty of, of history of what transpired since 2021. So I'm going, you know, I guess my question is, is do we need to hire them today or can we hire them in three months after we develop, after we develop a plan of action where, of what we need for it? So it, it, are you asking a consensus for us to award a contract for something that we don't, we haven't, for priorities that we haven't illustrated?
Well, the contracted, that was presented last, um, meeting. And then there was the discussion and all the deliverables. And I think that would have been the time, but I'm not going to, um, make anybody sign a contract, you know, enter into a contract. But this is where the communication is. If this was, as Councilman Jenkins just said, he didn't know where that came from. This is why we have the, uh, Bernie was here, then we should have discussed that because it's an open dialogue at that time. And, um, that's, if it means having, um, CGA come down here or us forming, uh, what our priorities are that they can help us with, then of course we can do that.
If you want a consensus now, then my answer is no.
Okay, Councilman Tullinger?
Um, no. Um, and I think part of the concern, at least, uh, expressed from Mr. Manuel, when we were to come up with legislative priorities is there are some, um, that are better to be discussed, um, with council as it relates to, let's just call it regional priorities and, and, and strategies. And so for that, I think that there's, and I agree, um, Madam Mayor, you know, we all got to be on the same page and, and prompt because we don't dictate the legislative session, right? Coming or not, we, we're either on board or we're not. But my concern is, uh, the same as Councilman Winkler. So I'm, I am a no at this time. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I'm a no. Councilman Jenkins?
I think we need to do this, but right now I'm not comfortable with moving forward. So my answer is no.
All right. So there's not a consensus to move this to legislation. What I would suggest from council is that we put this on a future agenda. If this is, uh, something that, uh, we want to secure, they have secured us $15.2 million in the last, uh, since their contract, uh, started in 2021 that we wouldn't have been able to get ourselves. So I think our next step would be perhaps on our meeting on October 8th is to have a, because that's a work session, is to have a work session and for us to come, council, do our homework, all five of us do our homework and decide what is important for the future of the town of La Plata and how can, uh, CGA help us secure that? So that's where I would go with that, uh, if that is okay with council. We'll see it on the 8th. Is that, uh, Councilwoman Winkler, are you okay with that?
That's ideal.
Uh, Councilman Tullinger?
Yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
No.
Okay, Councilman, uh, Jenkins?
Yes.
Okay, so we will put it on the 8th of October and all of us should come with some idea of priorities. And we will have a work session on the 8th. All right. Next is, uh, Ms. Minor again, Town Manager Recruitment, uh, Proposals.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, attached to the agenda was a memo prepared by myself, um, with a comparison of the three proposals that we received. We requested three, a proposal from each one of these companies and each one of them gave a proposal, um, with the fees. And at the end of the memo is, um, a recommendation and the justification of such for which company that, um, would be suggested to use, um, the company that was suggested I have worked with, um, in the past for several, recruitments here with the town, um, Town Manager, Town Treasurer, Chief of Police, Department of Planning. I have worked with, uh, one of the other companies as well on a recruitment and, uh, the, the, and one company I have not worked with. So if you have any questions, um, try and answer any of those.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My only question is, so when we do the three bid process, that's a part of us, you know, getting the correct amount, comfortable services. And I'm familiar with Catherine Tuck Parish, really like her work, but they were higher than the other two. So how can we do our due diligence following our process, get the three bids and then select the highest of the three bids? How do you, how do we justify that?
Well, I tried to justify it.
No, 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 no. I'm saying because the three bid process is, is that we have to look for the lowest bid. Okay. Did you, do you mind sharing the policy? Because that's what I always understood when Director Stahl would come before us and he would say, we, go ahead.
You necessarily don't look at the lowest bid. You look at the quality of service compared to the cost that it's, it's going to cost you. So you make an evaluation on cost to benefit. And if this contract is, we've used them before, we know what they're going to do, you're going to, they're going to have a higher, um, niche for the service because you're familiar with them. And that's where, it's not necessarily always priced because we want to make sure we get the service, the best quality service for whatever we're paying for.
Okay. So I'm clear on that one. So if I didn't see that the quality of the services of the, of the other two contracts was not quality. So does it eliminate the bias because we work with them and we know their quality of their work? Is that a bias?
Not necessarily. I mean, you've got to look, evaluate, I mean, I'm sure Michelle did her research on these companies and kind of made a conclusion based on her research on, um, whatever documents that they provided. This was the best path to get the results we need. We don't, it's best to go with the lowest one. I always recommend that, but if they're not, if the services aren't comparable, you need to look at the benefits cost.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So this only includes the town manager position and not the planning director?
Currently, this is just the town manager position, yes.
So to play again, the devil's advocate, um, and pardon me, so, so, uh, a, a, a platform like Indeed or Glassdoor or other ones that, that couldn't provide us with candidates, trickery easier made perhaps cheaper?
It could possibly provide candidates. We did try that in a town manager search two managers ago. And it put us two years out getting a manager because we did not get the quality of applicants. Not, I mean, that was 10, 15 years ago. I mean.
Okay. And then, um, so, uh, uh, an adjacent question. So what, what is the status of the planning director position?
The planning director, um, we are talking about doing a, um, a recruitment for that position as well. But the town manager would be the person that would hire the planning director. So it, the recruitment right now is not as crucial as for the town manager. We'll be bringing that back to you probably a little bit closer towards the end of the year, once we get closer to hiring a town manager. Because in our code, town, the town manager hires your directors.
That, that's interesting because I, I saw an article about a month ago where a town in Maryland, at the same time, hired a town manager and planning director. I, I find that interesting.
And we've, we've done a dual, um, we've got a town manager and treasurer, um, on parallel.
So why couldn't we do it for this contract then?
Well, we didn't put it out there that way.
Because again, I'm biased, but to me, the planning director is, is important too.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Because we got a lot of things cooking that we haven't gotten to yet.
Yes.
And so, I mean, I understand the code, but that's a whole nother topic. So, um, so we're going to not, so, so we're not really going to have a planning director for about four to six months.
Not a permanent planning director. We, we have some discussions going on with a temporary, with a retired director of planning from another municipality who's willing to do, um,
Right.
work for us until we get a planner hired, until we get a permanent person hired.
That's a good plan. I think that's a good plan.
Yes, they're retired, um, they retired for a little while, but have kept up their certification.
They can still work. Retired people can still work. That's good.
But still current with all of the.
She's still current with everything.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, still current with the certifications.
That's a good thing. Thank you for clarifying that because that's important.
Yes, we're still, I'm, we're, we're this close to getting it, getting it signed, but.
But there's a plan and process that we're, you're going to implement.
Yes, sir. Yes.
That's very helpful.
Um, any questions?
So as, do you see any difference between the three groups? And I know you've worked with one of them or, or, or two of the three, um, from a deliverable standpoint, do you see any difference or, or from a timeframe or how they go about? Is, do you see anything that one does better than the other? Aside from, well, I've worked with this one before, and, and here's kind of where I'm going from is each one kind of structured, hey, we've, we have expertise in this area doing this. And I, and I think they're all three are, are excellent, excellent candidates for, for taking on this role. And I, I am inclined to, to not use a, you know, let's just run an ad in a paper. I don't think you're going to get, you know, the, the, the quality that, that we, quite frankly, that we need. But each one does things a little bit different and I'm, I'm looking at timeframe and I'm looking at, um, um, track record. Is, is this something that quite frankly, that we as a council should sit down and kind of weigh the pluses and, and minuses or the pros and cons of, of establishing of exactly what we're looking for in a town manager? Kind of defining the role as we see it evolving into, to, in order to better to say, okay, of the three we got, who's more apt to selecting the candidate that we're looking for, not the best candidate that they perhaps find?
Well, right now you're looking just to hire the firm. You're not really setting the boundaries of what you want for the town manager. The two firms that I've worked with, they are wide apart. The one firm, it was very, it was, uh, it was in a box. You check this box, you check this box, you check this box. The other firm was a little more, uh, spoke with the council members, spoke with the department heads, came down. It wasn't as.
There in that, there in what is, I think that quite frankly, if we're going to, we need to have some personalized and face-to-face discussion with, and, and I don't know which three that you're alluding to of which one would provide us more of a hands-on. But, um, I, I would almost suggest that of, of the three, if you can tell me which one is more conducive to providing us with a more hands-on service, I, I will tell you that's the one that I would think that we should, we should.
In my honest opinion, it's the recommendation I gave you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So with your recommendation, um, I am looking for a consensus to move forward with, um, bringing this to legislation to pick the, and I don't know how to say the first part of it. But what is the one that you, Raffis?
Raffis, Raffis.
Okay, that's that one. So, Councilman.
I should know how to say the name, right? What I'm recommending.
Councilwoman Winkler?
I'd like to review this. I, I would like to sit back and, and take a, a more, you know, we received this, the, the three candidates on Friday after work hours. And I, I think that I'd like to, to review the track record of the three candidates. And, and if we have to meet in a closed session to discuss some things or if we had to meet on a, on a emergency basis in order to do it, I'm all for it. But I, I don't think at this time I'm ready to, to, to move forward with the recommendation.
All right. Councilman Tullinger?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Minor.
Uh, Councilwoman Bryant Ward? Yes, thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
All right. And, uh, we have a consensus. We will move forward to, uh, legislation today. So that brings us to legislation. First one is ordinance 24-15, Council Ward map update for the second reading.
Mayor James and Town Council, ordinance 2415, Council Ward map update for a second reading for consideration of adoption and ordinance concerning Council Ward map update for the purpose of updating the town of La Plata Council Ward map to include properties annexed into the town since December 18th, 2012 and to reflect changes in the town population as reported in the 2020 census and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 24-15?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt ordinance 24-15, Council Ward map update, um, as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to resolution 24-17, the AgroCopia Dam Breach Analysis.
Madam Mayor, for introduction and consideration of adoption of resolution concerning AgroCopia Dam Breach Analysis for the purpose of authorizing the chief executive officer to enter into a contract purchase agreement for a dam breach analysis and report and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept resolution 2417 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt resolution 24-17, AgroCopia Dam Breach Analysis as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that brings us to resolution 24-20, Executive Search Services.
Madam Mayor and Town Council, for introduction and consideration of adoption, a resolution concerning executive search services for town manager for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract for professional services with an executive search firm for the recruitment of candidates for the position of town manager and all matters generally relating thereto.
I will entertain a motion to, uh, adopt resolution 24-20.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt resolution 2420 for the purpose of executive search services for the town manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. All right, motion carries, four to one. All right, that will bring us to new reports or new business. Councilman Winkler?
The Historic Preservation Committee met last weekend or last Friday discussing the 100th and 21st, 25th anniversary of the respective tornadoes. We discussed improving or adding on to availability of some walking tours within the town. So that should be some information, hopefully in the next couple of, a couple of meetings to elaborate a little bit more clearly on that. We've also put together a, a subcommittee to come up with a, a legitimate and reasonable plan for converting the, the Firehouse Museum to, to its full utilization for, for a visible purpose. So to include engaging an architect to kind of come up with a, a full plan for its, for its use for the benefit of the town. So I'll keep you posted when, when we come to final on that.
Thank you very much. Councilman Tullinger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We were scheduled to meet this past Monday, but we are actually going to have our next meeting on October 28th.
All right. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Planning Commission's meeting was really good on the 17th. Pine Grove is continuing to build and expand and grow. They presented several preliminary plaits to the Planning Commission which were approved. And they requested an exception for a senior resident community that's going to be in there. And I thought that was really interesting, 55 and up. And the Planning Commissioners asked some great questions to identify what was the offset for why a 55 and older community within that development? Why not just, you know, regular homes? And they gave a good explanation for that. So that's exciting to have a 55 and older community in the midst of that community. And of course, we worked on the annual plan and Director Harrington did a great job of going through it. The Planning Commission was really engaged with that annual planning process. Hearing what we had done, where we were, where we, what we were reporting was really interesting to see how the town had grown from the last plan, annual report. So that was a really good meeting.
All right, thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
I thank you. The Parks and Recreation Commission met on September 11th. It was a, generally an update to the commission members about what's happening at Will's Park and the grant for the playground. And then, and the fact that there was more information provided by Ms. Minor about the Public Works had done an inspection of the playgrounds and it really is a basis for that grant is to upgrade and make it more safe and more usable. But they were updated about the, hopefully the county library may start in 2025, who knows? They were awaiting, they were briefed about the commission, about the waiting for the Maryland Department of Environment to, the permit to re, re-engage with Redwood Circle and Redwood Lake in terms of that Strongwater Management Project. And then one of our members, LaShawn, who is trying to develop a, a community garden and protection court, they hope to maybe start that in the fall. They just, because they are getting a grant from the Sierra Club and they would just, eventually would, would need some, some support from us if it's the MOU or just a lot of support. And then maybe to obtain some topsoil and other crops. That would help that particular community park. And that's the report, subject to any questions or comments.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Thought the, the community garden was already, they, they never started it.
No, they didn't because unfortunately they got, for some reason it was delayed and they didn't want to start in the heat of the summer, so they pushed it back. And so that's the reason for that, for the delay, yeah. Good question.
Okay. Today I had the opportunity to sit in with the Secretary of Transportation and hear about the Consolidated County Transportation Plan and actually got to pitch something for La Plata after thanking them for all that they have done for us with the flashing beacons which should come, the flashing crossing, crosswalk beacons which should come online by the end of the year. Everything is in place. So they're saying December 31st, just because they don't want to really say a time and not be able to meet that deadline. Thank them for the traffic light that's going up that has been approved at Willow Lane. And I also scolded them a bit for cutting our Route 6 streetscape. But I asked for a safety, another safety element in our, our arsenal there for a, a red camera light to go on for 301 and 6 as well as Willow, Shining Way and 301. We've been asking for this for a few years, so hopefully they will hear us and maybe we'll get one of those. It really is a safety issue and we have so many people that travel to go see that beautiful Governor Nice, Tom McMiddleton Bridge. And they want to get there so lickety-split that they run lights. And so we want to help them, remind them that a red light does mean stop. And other than that, I'd like to take my, just a few moments to, instead of announcing anything else, pay tribute to our friend that we lost yesterday. Was very tough, but hopefully I can keep it together here. Yesterday, the world got a bit dimmer with the passing of our beloved Director of Public Works, Jeff Gardner. If you had the pleasure of meeting Jeff, you were blessed. He was a man of few words, but abundant kindness. Someone who loved for his family and friends and community. And it shone, it was shined very brightly. His passions were, in life were many. He was steadfast, a fan of the Ravens. And I know that he absolutely loved that they beat Dallas on Saturday, on Sunday. And he loved the New York Yankees. And if there was a bowling alley nearby, you would be able to find Jeff there enjoying the game he loved. But perhaps the most important to him was spending time with his son Brandon, especially when they played bocce ball together. I had no idea what that was. They explained it, I still don't know. But every time Jeff talked about it, he just lit up. His commitment extended beyond his immediate circle. He was proud supporter of the Special Olympics, always striving to make a difference in the lives around him. When Jeff started with our town 39 years ago, he started in an entry level position. And he worked tirelessly and earned the respect of all who knew him. And his dedication, talent and unwavering work ethic propelled him to be the Director of Public Works, where he led with integrity and deep commitment to the community he loved so much. Beyond that, I know he was so involved with the EMS and he had something to do with the fire department too. So he was all over the place in Charles County. He was not only a dedicated public servant, he was a devoted friend and a cornerstone of our community. His kindness, generosity and a sense of humor, which I thought it was a little funnier than him, he did not, touched so many lives and he leaves behind a legacy that will be remembered for generations. We will miss him. He was loved by many. And rest in peace. He will not be forgotten. All right, I almost kept it together. With that, meeting adjourned.